I call this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is July 11, 2023, and it's 7:02 PM. Would the clerk hold the rules, please?
Councilman Fai?
Present.
Councilman Musa?
Present.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Hamwood?
Yes.
Councilman Elsmieri?
Yeah, present.
Councilman Hassan?
Present.
The mayor is present. Mr. Mayor, we have the floor.
Thank you. It's supposed to be an announcement section before proclamations, right?
Yeah, but I don't think we had any announcements in there.
Do we have any? I...
I didn't have any to add to it.
You're right. I think when I received an email from, I mean, a text message from Islamic Center of Hamtramck, they are having a grand opening of the new Islamic Center of Jesus Temple, and they are inviting all the city council and staff and city manager and everybody to join them, and it's on Sunday, 16th of July at 9:00 PM. So they just wanted me to do that. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And we move to proclamations, recitations, and presentations. Do you want to add any of those? No? Okay. additions and resolutions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to add a couple of resolutions today. Excuse me. I'd like to add under "New Business," one consolation. It should be "D: Resolution Removing Russ Gordon and Kathy Stepppool From Human Relations Commission." Resolution 2023-... What should be is that?
It would be...
Ninety-nine.
Correct.
Yeah, ninety-nine. So that... And also, I'd like to add another resolution.
We have to add one at a time.
Okay, okay, so can we do?
Second. All right. Vote?
Yeah.
Okay, the session? No?
No.
Okay. Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Hamwood?
Yes.
Councilman Elsmieri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-99 added to New Business E.
Mr. Chair, next one. E: Resolution Number 2023. Should be 100. Resolution to resent authority of Human Relations Commission to maintain and fly flags on the city property.
Can you speak up, please?
Yeah, we need to speak up.
Yes, "Resolution to resent authority of Human Relations Commission to maintain and fly flags on city property." Which means it will remove the authority of the Human Relations...
All discussions under that resolution.
Could you please speak up? Do you want me to read the title?
You can, but she's not going to understand.
Okay, the first resolution that was passed is "Resolution Removing Russ Gordon and Kathy Stepppool From Human Relations Commission."
Oh, I didn't even hear that!
Excuse me.
Second.
Okay, got the second one. We don't have time. Speak up.
No discussion, though.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead.
Second resolution. "Resolution To Recent Authority of Human Relations Commission To Maintain and Fly Flags On City Property."
Mr. Chair, third one.
You have to vote on that.
We need to vote on this.
Second, too.
Second, yeah.
Who seconded?
He seconded. I seconded, too.
Okay, Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Elsmieri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hamwood?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-100 added to New Business E.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I thought I heard another one about the discussion.
That one, so there's one on there that's listed for just discussion. It's not really a resolution.
Why, why, still I can put down them...
If you could just add a discussion to it, but I also ask kindly that someone sponsor. There is a third resolution for approving Friends of Historical Hamtramck Stadium Special Events.
Yeah, if somebody else does it. Yep.
Councilman Fai? Councilman Fai, I need a second. So can you, well, let me read it off. This resolution would be Resolution 2023-101.
Yep.
And then this would be "New Business."
101.
And it is Resolution 2023-101 Approving Friends of Historical Hamtramck Stadium Special Events.
Yes, I'll second. I'll make your first. Oh, for a second.
All right, vote. Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Elsmieri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hamwood?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 101. Council, Resolution 2023-101 is moving to New Business F, letter F.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I heard another one for discussion, so it's...
Motion for discussion under the business.
Yeah.
Second.
Wait a moment, I'm sorry. Who seconded?
I'd like to make a motion.
A motion to add discussion for the business G. And he will be discussing property taxes?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Hamwood?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Elsmieri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, discussion was added to New Business, letter D, for property tax discussion. Are you assuming that's all for addition and resolutions?
Yeah, that's all.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So we move to the public comment now.
I'm going to start with the in-person public comments first, just so that they don't get sort of like ground out with all the written...
I think this is good.
Yeah, me reading them. So Atlas K. Three minutes.
One second. I'm going to be sharing a statement from a Hamtramck resident and business owner. My name is Elizabeth Fonziere. I address you today through a messenger. I'm a female business owner in Hamtramck. I worked very hard in life to gain the opportunity to own property and operate a business in this city. This past weekend, my private residence above my business was attacked by violent vandals. They threw eggs which exploded on my window, causing siding damage and trauma. My 3.5-month-old child slept away feet from the window that was attacked. My mother was in another room and was terrified by the sound, which was so loud she thought was gunfire. All of this because I chose to fly a flag that represents my beliefs. This flag is on my private property over my public business. Most of my customers come to visit from outside Hamtramck. Many of them are from as far away as Ann Arbor, Lansing, Grand Rapids, Ohio, Chicago, and sometimes even further. I receive national recognition...
Atlas, I apologize. You were heard, but can you push the button on the mic, please? Thank you.
All right, for sure. Would you like me to start again?
No, you're good.
Okay, for sure. Give me one second. Let me find that. "Most of my customers come to visit from outside Hamtramck. Many of them are from as far away as Ann Arbor, Lansing, Grand Rapids, Ohio, Chicago, and sometimes further. I receive national recognition in the food and beverage industry for my products and services. Many people have asked me, 'Why did you open in Hamtramck?'" "Why did I open here when I could have opened many other places that could have benefited my contributions and respected me and my clientele better?" "Because my grandmother grew up in Hamtramck. My friends live in Hamtramck. My heart is in Hamtramck. My child is growing up in Hamtramck, and we are not going anywhere. It is only going to reflect poorly on the city to disrespect its passionate and peaceful citizens when they ask for a safe place to live, worship, work, and raise children. Thank you for your efforts and for listening to my statements."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for having me today. I'm here to talk to you about the recent uptick in hate crimes against the LGBTQ community. I am the president of the Hamtramck Queer Alliance, and one of the things that we have been trying to do is keep track of all of the different instances of people shouting slurs across the street, people tearing down private property flags, egging houses like you've heard in the last statement. And what I want you to understand is that the policy that you have passed, the one that is neutral, does not have a neutral impact on the citizens of your city. In particular, the most vulnerable citizens in your city. The minorities who are not accepted by the religious majority in this city. The different crimes that have been happening in the city have been very concerning to the Hamtramck Queer Alliance because we have seen a huge uptick in those crimes. Meaning, before the ordinance was passed in 2023, we have had over five times as many reports for different events of people shouting things across the street or destroying property like we talked about. And it is concerning to me how quickly the council is able to do things for their citizens when they think that something is important to do. In fact, they could get up on a Sunday morning or an afternoon and mobilize to make sure something happens, especially when their pride is involved, right? But what doesn't seem to be happening is any sort of mobilization to protect this community based on the resolution that you have passed that has had an impact on the safety of your residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Mike Petrack. I own Dos Locos Tacos and buildings in. Been a resident of Hamtramck for 15 years. I'm also the father of the child that was mentioned in the statement in front of my friend Atlas on behalf of my partner. I'm here today as a business owner, a resident, and a father to speak on behalf of one of the city's newest residents. Not here to chastise you for your beliefs, nor do I believe that anything I can say here would change them. I'm here to let you know just how close we came to tragedy Friday night. On Friday night, as my three-month-old daughter was asleep in her crib, two masked men adults threw a half dozen eggs at her home because there was a pride flag on display. Two of those eggs struck a window less than two feet from the crib she was sleeping. That window pane is an eighth of an inch thick. If they had broken, she would have been showered in shards of glass. Just let that sink in. Two adult men could have very easily maimed or killed an innocent child because they are unwilling to tolerate a different point of view. Emboldened by the rhetoric coming from this esteemed body of government, they committed a premeditated string of acts of intimidation and destruction of property against multiple homes and businesses, all because they don't respect our right to free speech. If you're truly against this despicable behavior, then you need to say it louder and more frequently. You need to step up and actually lead this community towards peace. The police department has been professional and receptive on this issue, but they have a tough job ahead, and an example needs to be made of these perpetrators. Mr. Mayor, as far as I'm concerned, it's your duty to speak at every Friday service in town until it stops. An eighth of an inch, gentlemen. That's how close we came to a tragedy that would have made national news forever tarnish your reputations and the reputation of the city. An eighth of an inch. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Roland Strick fellow?
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, esteemed council. I'm Reverend Dr. Roland Strick fellow, and I want to say, first of all, I come in peace, and I want to also talk about public safety, much of which has been stated tonight. But oftentimes, as a faith leader, I understand the difference between protecting someone's religious freedom, which I am all for, and then also protecting people's publics and private safety. And as elected officials, that's one of the things that I really encourage, not only public officials, but parents and anyone who might have, who may not quite understand someone else's sexuality or gender expression, but to say that even though I may not understand or agree with you, I will stand up for your safety, especially those who are, who have elected positions to stand up for safety. Today, when we all gather, we stood up and we pledged allegiance to this flag, and this flag is used to unite all of us together as Americans. And flags are indeed symbols, and the pride flag is indeed a symbol that should create peace and not division. And so, one of the things I just really wanted to say that we're not talking about the right to fly a flag. We're talking about matters of life and death. Because when you share a particular, say, "I'm for this" or "against that," it gives permission for people to say, "Oh, I'm against them too," and take it to extremes that you never would have imagined or intended. But one of the things that I really do hope as a faith leader and those who I represent in this community is to say, "Please reconsider the policy in which you have enacted with your resolution." Recognizing that once it happened, what it did, it gave permission for people to act in very hateful and harmful ways. Very last thing I wanted to say, when I heard all of you have been elected to the position that you are in, I was so very proud because to have men of color to stand when you generally don't see men of color in positions of leadership, that says a lot. And I just really wanted to say that, you know, as in your position to stand for the safety of all individuals and not to do anything that would be divisive. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Bill Meyer?
Hi, Bill Meyer, for one second. I just didn't know those two new resolutions were being put on the canvas. I was interested in it. Anyways, this is something that I'm very familiar with, as you probably know by now. I've been the chair of the Human Relations Commission for many years, five years. And it's no big deal to be removed from the Human Relations Commission because I was, and I really started one in Hamtramck and returned the work that we should have done with the Human Relations Commission, but was stifled by the council and mayor at the time. Mayor removed me. The council had the choice of putting me back on the Human Relations Commission, but I chose not to go back on because I didn't want to work with a commission and a council that wasn't working in conjunction with a body that's supposed to represent the council of the city. The Human Relations Commission has fallen apart ever since I left there. They rarely have enough members to show up for quorums. They won one major project since I left 15 years ago, just the flag project, and that turned into a commercial thing where they have to have other people pay for it now and put up their own flag, and, you know, it's turned into a totally counterproductive project. Now we have this new issue with the pride flag, and I'm under my own control. I know you all feel this way, and I feel this way, too. We have to protect everybody in the city, and I know you want to, and I have total concern about the statements that were made before this. And you have to make sure everyone is protected in the city. And I know it's your job to go out on the street and go knock people's doors. I think that's the police job, but you should show your face in the street publicly more in defense of all the people who live in the city. That would be nice. As far as the issue with the Human Relations Commission, I think I totally support you removing people who are not working with the city because this is an organization that's supposed to be working with the city. Instead, I understand that in defiance of the rule that you passed at the last council meeting, they attempted to put a pride flag back up on the flag, which was in defiance of the rule of the city government, which is supposed to represent the majority of all the people in the city. So they actually committed something against the people of the city. Maybe a small segment really supported what they did, and certainly we support that community, but we don't support raising the flag anymore because that was already voted on. It was illegal. So this says nothing against gay people or LGBTQ community. It says against following the rules, which I have to follow rules every day that I don't like, but I still follow them, unfortunately. I will always defend everyone that lives in this city to be treated equally and justly. Let's all find a way to work together instead of coming here and doing disruptions like this, which divides people. The Human Relations Commission is supposed to bring people together. That's the purpose of the commission. They're not doing that. They haven't done anything. They put the flags up that's colored wrong. Let them do something positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Michelle, I'm sorry, your last name?
Hammond.
Hammond?
Yes.
Welcome.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Michelle Hammond, and I am here to talk about the property taxes. A couple of months ago, I received, this is not a tax bill, and the change of the tax's value increased and/or decreased. Your tax bill for the year of this year, 2023, was approximately $90. When I opened up my new tax bill, and this is, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and anybody else that's in my neighborhood, because me and my Aunt Deborah Richards, that couldn't be here today, walk the streets and ask everybody that their taxes increased extremely this year, which they did. When I opened up my tax bill, my tax bill was over $300 more than it was last year. I'm trying to find out what is this court order that was on the property taxes? Why was anybody in the city notified about this new court order on the taxes? And will it be on there every year? Also, I want to know what is the standard rate to access the taxes? If I've been in my home for over 10 years, my taxes should not be raised up $200, $300 every single year. It's not stable. It's not normal. I don't live in Farmington Hills. I don't live in Sterling Heights. I need a resolution, and I'm also a plaintiff, and I also want to know, are all the homeowners getting the same treatment? Or is there any difference or distinguish with the plaintiffs in the error case? And are we getting hit harder? Because it seems to me that by us, we get in these new homes, and Hamtramck didn't have to pay a dime to build these homes. They're hitting the plaintiffs harder than anybody else in the city. And it's proof. Online, you can see it's public records, and they're doing it all over again. And also, you know, why does the taxes, why does they go up every year when the value of houses are going down? And then assessor is not assessing the houses correctly either. You know, you can assess outside, but you're not going actually inside to see what the houses are, how many bedrooms they are, how many bathrooms. It's not accurate, and I can see this for public records online. So whoever is assessing these houses are not assessing them correctly, and we won again, a good fight, and we'll win again. But we got to get down to the bottom of it because these taxes every year are getting raised up high. It's ridiculous. We want to live, too.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
All right, that's all for in-person public comments.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask a question? Is it okay on the...
I think it's not right now.
I mean, let's finish that public comment.
I have one email, and then I had some letters hand-delivered to the office, so I'll be reading through those. "Hello, dear Mayor, Council, City Clerk, City Manager, and City Attorney. My name is Ahmad Ali, and I am a resident of Home Street. First, I would like to give my condolences to the city attorney for his loss. I would like to say that what happened this week is an embarrassment to the rule of law. The city as a whole and the Human Relations Committee in specific. The commissioner needs to resign, or the mayor needs to fire him. We can't have rouge officials that do things based on their whims and desires. What he did was wrong, and if we can't trust our public officials to uphold the law, who can we trust? I would also thank our council mayor, DPW director, for their work in making the city better and keep up the hard work. Thank you. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, Gender nonconformity is as ancient as humanity and has had countless iterations throughout cultures and history. If it is so unnatural, then why must violence be used to suppress it? Violence can be legislation. Violence can be verbal. Recognize the legacy of violence you now perpetuate. Remember this as you progress this path of hate. Remember, you can always turn back. Remember, you can always repent. Freea, Hamtramck resident. Dear Hamtramck City Council, my name is Jackie Van Toyle, Toylee. I am a queer transgender woman. Since coming to Hamtramck, I've become a part of a vibrant, supportive, and loving queer community that has lifted up my life. Queer people are here in Hamtramck. The city council's decision regarding the pride flag is cowardly, divisive, bigoted, and bigoted. They ought to be ashamed. Jackie Van Toylee. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, hello, my name is Claire, and I am a Hamtramck resident. As a municipal professional who has hosted many public meetings myself, I have questions about the new public comment restrictions, which might technically follow the letter of the Open Meetings Act, but they're absolutely in defiance of the spirit of it. In addition, I oppose Resolution 2023-93. You should not be able to seamlessly transition from public office to paid top worker of the city. It almost seems like you had someone in mind when you wrote it. Claire Nawak Boyd. "Since you passed Resolution..." Dear Hamtramck City Council members, since you passed Resolution 2023-82, the resolution meant to ban the gay pride flag from being flown on city property. You have made international news as the city council stoking hatred of gay people. Hamtramck now bears the mark of being uniquely intolerant of the LGBTQ community. Moreover, businesses and people who fly the pride flag on their own personal property are reporting escalating levels of vandalism and hostile behavior from people on the street. This behavior was not happening before. It has clearly been egged on by the perception that your resolution affirms the right of bigots to harass gay people. You claim your intentions in passing the resolution was to oppose racism and bigotry, but look at the effects your actions are having instead. Marcus Merritt, Ph.D., Hamtramck resident. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, I first want to thank you for such a prompt response to the pride flag going up. I'm hopeful that this is indicative of your willingness to have a quick and concise response to the latest wave of vandalism. I do want to apologize for not being here this evening, but I am away on work, not of the shadow government. I've been collecting the footage and will continue to do so. I'm accepting footage at atawsu@proton.me. I'm so excited about how this year is shaping to form so far. I'm hearing lots, I'm hearing of lots of community activity and determination, and I've never been more proud of my community, with the exception of the gentleman assembled in front of the reader. Anywho, in closing, I do think that Council Hassan owes me an apology for trying to lie to the cops about me. Lady of Corruption, Gracie, Hamtramck resident. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, the city council should take immediate action to address the recent and growing trend of anti-gay activity in our community. City council itself is partly responsible for this trend since they gave their implicit support to anti-gay bias when they banned the gay pride flag on city property. As a gay man, I have enjoyed being a part of Hamtramck community for the last year and a half. In the last month, however, I have noticed a concerning increase in unwelcoming behavior from certain members of the community. Since June of this year, my partner and I have had to replace our gay pride flag on our house three times after two were stolen and one was torn in half, prompting us to file a police report with the Hamtramck Police Department. Additionally, a passing driver shouted an anti-gay slur at my partner and me as we were standing in front of our house a couple of weeks ago. This is the only time I have ever experienced something like this in our city. I am also aware that two local businesses flying gay pride flags were recently vandalized. To help prevent further hateful acts in our community, city council must make clear that Hamtramck is accepting of everyone and that anti-gay acts will not be tolerated. To send this message effectively, the city council must immediately rescind the ban on the gay pride flag. Going forward, the city council should additionally speak out opportunities to foster inclusivity with the LGBTQ community by engaging with gay-friendly businesses and organizations. Finally, the city also needs to direct the Hamtramck Police Department to make acts of anti-gay vandalism and enforcement priority. Ian Nichols, Hamtramck resident. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, the recent flag ban... The recent flag ban has put the entire city in danger. Every news article about the law, the comments there are full of Islamophobia and homophobia. The law is perfect for outsiders and propagandists to characterize our city as anti-American. Look around. These days, mass shootings are happening everywhere. All it takes is for one person who knows nothing about our city to come here with bad intentions. It can absolutely happen here. This law does not... This law does nothing to help our community, and it has put a huge target on all of our backs. People who don't like pride flags will still see them. This City Council is a disgrace for passing this stupid law for political points at the expense of the community and all of our safety. Claude Silviera, Hamtramck resident. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, I moved to Hamtramck in 2017 after graduating college and securing a job at General Motors. I grew up only about 15 minutes away and had been frequenting Hamtramck to visit my friends and local establishments for years, and was so excited to become a part of this vibrant, kind, and growing community. As a young professional with a lot of potential, I was so excited to purchase my first home in Hamtramck in late 2019, after falling in love with the city and becoming active in my community in many ways. I've had family working in the Hamtramck school system for decades, as well as family ties dating back to relatives working at the hospital in the north side of town in the 50s, and various family members living here throughout the decades as well. When the city's decision to allow the call to prayer was announced, I was heartened that a small community could grow to embrace anyone who called it their home. My first landlords in the city were a young, recently-immigrated Bangla family whose children made me smile every day and were always quick to lend a hand to the young women renting out their upper floor, as I was with them. Since moving into my home, my neighbors have been kind enough to share treats with me for Eid. We have lit fireworks together in the streets every year since I moved in. The children love to give my dog a treat and pet her when we come home, and my neighbors have even come over and let me know that they saw someone peeking in my window while I was away, when I was very new to the block. I have been so proud to be embraced by those around who care about the well-being of those we share a block and our city with. Unfortunately, I no longer feel the safety and compassion with these neighbors, and friends have extended to me due to the actions of my community. With a high salary and future earning potential, I should be an asset to my city, not to mention the fact that I maintain a board of directors position with two different community-based nonprofits and spend much of my time making an effort to better the lives of those around me. The statements consistently made by Hamtramck residents online, including but certainly not limited to my sin, mental illness, and pedophilia, make me feel decidedly unsafe in my own home, where I pay taxes to live happily. Seeing people in this community, young and old, deface a simple piece of cloth meant to show solidarity with all members of the community, and call for jailing, execution, and exile of gay people haunts me every day. Am I so unacceptable for the love I freely give? Will God see fit to punish me, not only in the next life, but in this one as well, for the crime of finding a caring person to spend my time and life with, have the lives of all the people whose groceries I've paid for, animals I've vaccinated and provided veterinary care for, and neighbors I've shared a sunny afternoon or a chilly night with, been so negatively impacted that I should be run out of this previously accepting and strong community? In the minds of many hearing and reading this letter, the answer is yes. I beg of you. Where is the willingness to at least live and let live? It is with shame that I am afraid to sign my name to this letter for fear of endangering myself, those I care about and those to whom I provide care. Ms. P., Hamtramck resident. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, protect democracy at all costs. E. Maldondo, Hamtramck resident. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, my home and pride flags have been vandalized three times since you passed this resolution banning pride flags from our city property. While your resolution only applied to city property, I fear that some members of our community are taking this as approval to harass the LGBTQ community in Hamtramck. Could you pass a resolution condemning these types of actions and confirming that Hamtramck remains a welcoming place for LGBTQ residents? Daniel Prickly, Hamtramck resident. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, if the flags are important to this council, I would strongly suggest that the city follow U.S. flag code, as right now there are multiple violations on the flag that fly in front of City Hall. It's embarrassment for a veteran to see the flag unlit in the rain and the city flag tattered to the point of being unreadable. Colleen, Hamtramck resident. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, I am the owner of a Hamtramck hostel, an affordable location for people to stay in Hamtramck. Unfortunately, some folks have told me that they no longer wish to stay in the city where they, members of the LGBTQ community, are not welcome. This will have a big impact on my business. It also isn't right. There are multiple examples of City Council allowing religion into politics in City Hall in support of religious folks. You allow free parking on Eid and Christmas and closed City Hall as one of the many examples. This is a nice thing to support Muslims and Christian citizens. It is time to show the same support to its LGBTQ-plus citizens and visitors. Scott Aronson, Hamtramck resident. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, hello, I hope your evening is going splendidly. I am so happy to be able to provide public comment in an easily accessible manner. That's a joke. Actually, I'm more disappointed that due to your actions, you are hiding from public comment on your actions. City Council, I hope we're all having fun, as I personally cannot wait to see what happens next. Will it be a new ordinance? Will the Mayor write another shady poem, but well-written? Gracie Cadju, Hamtramck resident. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, you have not just excluded people who cannot come to council meetings from having a voice, you are also silencing those you have actively intimidated away from City Hall. You are taking rights away from the contagious and pregnant and busy. This should not surprise us. Your selfishness has been on display all year, from bullying your gay neighbors to disgusting turning parklands full of children into parking lots because you are lazy. Thank you for continuing to display your complete disregard for anyone who doesn't behave how you want them to behave. Carrie Beth Lasley, Hamtramck resident. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, I see here so much hate, it sickens me. Stop all the hate. Patrick J., Concerned Citizen. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, first of all, refuse to take no more than 15 public comments via email is anti-democratic. I don't care about flags usually, and I don't like Mike Duggan anymore for using this culture war stunt of Hamtramck City Council to try and win support. Clearly, this is not about flags, but about the safety of LGBTQ Detroiters. We know your City Council is being supported by dark money, the same dark money that stoked hate in Dearborn. You aren't fooling anyone. And how spineless, really, to bow to the demands of people who don't even have the best interest of your Muslim citizens in mind, just for a taste of political power. You might be able to cause fear in religious people right now, but time will tell. You will be remembered for the cowardly, power-seeking politicians you are. God does not reward people who are full of greed and profit off of hate. Wave your flags, put them at half-mast, or burn them. I do not care. Queer Detroiters built this city, and we will be here long after you cash in your political prowess for a higher position. We are watching. God is watching. Z. St. James, Concerned Citizen. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, in regards to limiting electronic submission of public comment, I think that's a terrible idea. I grew up and lived most of my life in Hamtramck and still own several rental properties here, there. However, I am not down to the city very often, as I live up north on a lake with few neighbors. Therefore, obviously, I would like to see the continuance of digital submission of public comments to the council. Cheryl Zarziki, concerned citizen. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, I've loved Hamtramck since I started visiting for the Metro Times blowout in the 1990s. While I don't want to deny your many brilliant local businesses, my patronage, I have a hard justifying the trip, given the hateful, bigoted stance the council has taken as of late. I imagine I'm not the only one. Please reverse this heinous decision and celebrate the diversity that has always made your city great. Tyler Brubaker, concerned citizen. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, please don't discriminate against LGBTQ-plus community. Margaret Elliott, concerned citizen. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, Muslims are called by the Quran to stand against wrongful oppression wherever they find it. I urge everyone reading this to stop pretending the people of Sodom were practicing consensual homosexuality and heed Quranic values of acceptance and love instead of cultural values of homophobia and erasure. Victoria M., concerned citizen. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, to create a safe, accepting, and peaceful community, you must celebrate and educate on the topics and ideals that make up such a diverse community. The hate, just stop. And you must lead by example. Stop the hate. Lisa, concerned citizen. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, for as diverse as Hamtramck is, or claims to be, it is pretty dark stain on that. This is a pretty dark stain on that legacy. By lumping pride flags in with extremist flags such as swastikas and other hate group flags, it is sending the message that the Hamtramck City Council thinks LGBTQ equals extremism, when it couldn't be further from the truth. And I think y'all are smart enough to see that. This is just y'all conservative underbelly showing itself, jumping on the hate train as cities, states, across the nation adopt similar anti-gay legislation. Way to turn the clocks back. There are queer people from all nationalities which fit your diverse Hamtramck narrative, yet they are being singled out. Let the rainbow flag fly. It's the least you y'all can do. Next up, actually protect queer and trans kids from the violence that is sure to come. Joseph Bootcam, concerned citizen. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, until recently, I was a longtime resident of Hamtramck and loved the diverse community of people who live in the city. It is heartbreaking that City Council has decided to feed into hate by passing the flag ban. There is nothing neutral about this resolution, especially considering the rise in vandalism and hatred that has plagued the LGBTQ community in Hamtramck since its passing. One word I keep hearing is groomer, and as a former proud street auntie of six neighbor kids who grew up around me where I lived in the city, is distressing to be treated as a criminal for existing. What exactly was grooming? Was it during our science fence chats where I would answer any science questions any neighbor kids could think of? Was it when they invited me to their birthday parties, when we mourned the passing of my beloved dog together? Was I grooming them when I went with their whole family to an apple orchard and petting zoo? Maybe it was when I went over to their house to fix things for them and stayed for tea. This resolution is not a reflection of the true character of the citizens of the city and should be reversed to support the true character of the diverse city. Amanda, concerned citizen. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, the council needs to recognize the volume of comments will not decrease because you're limiting avenues for residents to work with you. The LGBTQ community has supported the city of Hamtramck peacefully and without issues prior to the resolution of banning pride flags. It's incredibly dishonorable and shameful that Russ Gordon was removed from the Human Relations Commission yesterday. Neutrality is about conversation, not removing every voice you don't agree with. If you continue down this path, you will continue to scar Hamtramck's legacy as a diverse and proud community. Matt I., concerned citizen. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, before moving to Michigan, I was a lifelong resident of the state of Florida. As you can see in headlines every week, Florida is trying to eradicate the rights of LGBTQ people. When I first moved, I was so relieved to live in a place where I thought was more accepting, in a place that I thought was more accepting. But as the flag ban you've imposed clearly shows, hate can be found everywhere you go. It is disappointing, but not surprising, that the City Council has decided the First Amendment doesn't apply to LGBTQ members of the community. Joseph M., concerned citizen. Dear Hamtramck City Council member, the flag ban was heartbreaking news. I've had an enormous crush on Amir, as well as several striking members of the council. This feels so personal, when I express such deep and sincere love and affection for Amir and the rest of the council. Please reverse this decision and let our flags and love soar. Pink Flowers, concerned citizen. Dear Hamtramck City Council members, I live in Bangla Town. Most of the businesses I need to access for food, supplies, work, and social life are in Hamtramck. Since the City Council's decision to enact the removal of the equally inclusive queer representation of the pride flag from city property, my family and I have experienced a dramatic increase in incidence of harassment, unfriendly behavior, and aggression in Hamtramck. It is also true, some folks have taken extra time to extend kindness, empathy, and acknowledgement. I've even had a respectful conversation with the foundation of real acceptance may have been laid. It would be a bold and powerful move for the City Council to create a sustainable avenue of healing. Perhaps this is a commission of peace that is formed to represent the specific demographics of Hamtramck, led by someone with a background fit for the task of building social bridges or social art engagements with similar goals. This city is hurting, and it isn't just the LGBTQ-plus community. The pain extends beyond the borders, because borders don't contain the human heart. Please consider the legacy of the choices you are making in your words and deeds here today on the street. Ephemerah Lin Fay, concerned citizen. Mr. Mayor, this is all for public comments.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, just a minute. I mean, oh, you got another one? I told you I had one. Yeah, I'm here to speak mostly on behalf of friends, family, and people in the Hamtramck residents that I've spoken to, also on behalf of myself, on property taxes. I notice in the last three to five years, it has increased three to seven times for many of us, and I'm one of them. There's no reason for these homes to be over-assessed. I really don't even know how they even assess them, or even a breakdown, how they're being broken down to the residents. There's no reason for this. Our roads are still bad. There's not enough money going into our schools. Many of our alleys are disgusting and scary, unpaid. There's still lead issues in our water. There's also, every time it rains, we always have to cross our fingers that water doesn't back up into our basements. I'm one where my taxes were $1,900 last year, and now it's $6,500 this year. That's three and a half times over. I do hear people complaining they've increased $100, $200. I understand there's got to be some type of increases, but when you increase someone from $1,900 to $6,500, you're chasing them out of Hamtramck, not trying to promote them to come into Hamtramck. And it's for many other residences that I know, mostly recent purchases, three to five years. Now, I do understand that someone living and resident a home in Hamtramck 30, 40 years, and they're only paying $1,000, and they got the same square footage as my house. Should I be paying the same? Maybe not. But I shouldn't have to pay $6,000 more than my neighbor. What services am I going to be providing that is not provided to him? So as, you know, council, we elected you guys to, you know, serve and protect, and also service the people of Hamtramck. At the same time, you know, I feel like you're chasing people away from Hamtramck, too. Something needs to be done. And that's why we elected you guys to office.
I agree with you, sir. You did a very good job.
All right. We have heard so many complaints about this, and that's why we brought this resolution for discussion today of the property taxes. So we noticed there is an issue, and we need to figure out what it is, and most likely we will form a subcommittee to take care of that. Thank you. And there is another person who told me that you want to come and speak, but you didn't speak. Did you want to talk about your issue? Maybe you didn't know the process? You need to fill out your part? Maybe you need a half-minute? I knew he didn't know the process, because he told me he's coming to speak. And so, we can take your questions, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, the question was, all the violence that happens massively is reported here. He has been informed to the city administration, and what kind of steps have been taken? I just want to ask the question to the city manager. I know Steve is not here, but if they want to...
The yellow shirt. If you get the yellow shirt, you want to speak.
Did you want to speak as well? No.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
I know, it's just getting lost of you. I don't know what's going on.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, can you?
Okay, you can speak, and then we can...
My name is Mohammed Majid. I've been a resident in Hamtramck since 1996, almost 28 years. I graduated high school 2002. I'm fully committed to the city, and I invest in the city. In the past five years, I accumulated properties, and it's getting worse and worse. I mean, if I just tell you the last three properties that I purchased, it's crazy. 3159 Belmont, property taxes $7,747. This is on a home that the rent on the first level is elderly men who pay $650, and the upper level is a student who will at least pay $100. Now, if their water heater goes out, I won't even be able to fix it because of the money that they want. Here's another home, 2260 Hewitt, same thing, $7,740, which I refuse to change the rent, because it's another elderly man and another elderly woman. Next door to that house, the same house, same built, same style, 2266 Hewitt, $5,232. And I'm not going to tell you the address, and I'm just going to tell you the numbers. $5,538, $5,540, $4,400. I mean, there's no point in me keeping these homes. There's no point. I might as well, every summer, sell a house to pay the property tax. I mean, I want to invest in the city. I want people to invest in this city, but at this rate, I purchase these homes $120, $130, $110. The only reason why I got them at those prices is because I'm paying land contract, paying half-down... half-down, and you pay monthly installments. But at this rate, I don't know to pay the property tax, to pay the homeowner. I don't know what to do. And they all need work. I guarantee you, if I took each one of these homes, none of you will live in the house for $300,000. I promise you. They all need cutting, and I can't even take the people out to fix the house because I have to worry about this. I honestly don't know what to do. Sell the homes, keep the homes? Like, I just -- I'm stuck. I mean, if I show you this, I don't even want to tell you the number. It's crazy. It's crazy. And I just need answers. I need help, you know? I want to invest in the city. I want to continue to let it, you know, grow with the city. But at this rate, these numbers, people are not playing pain in Troy, in Canton, you know? That's pretty much it. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Saleh Aldehan.
Hello. My name is Saleh Aldehan. Last week, I had a ticket to Joseph Campbell without his -- with -- I've been here since almost over 30 years, and I never heard about this new world. Everybody, they do this. Why is it up to me? I mean, they stop me and they give me a ticket. This is not fair.
So, what was the problem?
The problem is, we have a wedding, and we drive very slow, not like crazy people. That's why I have a ticket. I know. And my son, he's -- he went from the sunroof, you know? Everybody did this. Since 30 years, everybody did this. And I don't know why I have a ticket. That's all.
Yeah. I mean, that -- I can't even -- I can't even express how dangerous it is to stand in the sunroof when the car is moving. I mean, that's just careless. I mean, the driver probably should have got a careless ticket. From what I understand, you got a seatbelt ticket on that. I mean, they let you off pretty easy. Frankly speaking, if people are driving around and hanging out of sunroofs and hanging out of windows, they should probably get more tickets for that, because that's -- that's just a recipe for disaster. If someone were to hit you and he was hanging out the top of that sunroof, that'd have been all over for yourself.
So, no, he only -- so, his argument is, how come everybody's doing it and he's the only one who got a ticket? I know what you're saying.
So, bottom line is, I mean, the police can't ticket everybody. They tried to ticket who they can for this. Apparently, they observed your son doing it, and you got the ticket for it. But if -- if someone else was doing it, I can guarantee you they would have wrote them a ticket too. So, people do get tickets for this. They get tickets for far more than that. That's dangerous behavior. A hundred percent.
This is the first ticket in the city.
It is not the first time that it's been written in the city. In fact, in fact, those processions happen very frequently. They're in the city, we're very, very familiar with it, and they're usually rife with careless driving. And all the time, police officers are writing tickets to people that are acting very irresponsible in those processions. Now, don't get me wrong, there's nothing wrong with the procession as long as people are following the rules, driving safely, wearing their seatbelts, driving responsibly, but hanging out sunroofs, doing -- people are doing burnouts, doing all kinds of crazy driving, and frankly, if that's what they're doing, they deserve a ticket for this. And this is not exclusive to your son, 100%.
This is the first ticket in this city.
It is not exclusive.
I think it's improper to go back and forth, honestly, so I think we can't continue this.
I do appreciate you coming on. Do you want to address this question?
Repeat your -- do I repeat it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, please.
Only reason is, I see all the violence has been brought to our attention. It's been reported to the city, and is there any precaution or anything have been taken against those, you know, destroying the eggs and windows and all of the stuff? It's been reported to police department or -- I mean, what's the update on it?
We are very, very carefully monitoring the situation. The police department has been taking multiple reports on this topic and investigating everything as thoroughly as possible. The PD is very much high and alert for this, and frankly, anyone they do catch doing this behavior, we're going to try to do our best to prepare a case for prosecutors' offices to prosecute. I mean, the city's not going to tolerate it, and the PD is doing the best they possibly can to apprehend it. Frankly, it is, there are a lot of juveniles doing it, which is unfortunate. Not that there hasn't been some adults, because there is, but there are a lot of kids doing this bad behavior as well. So, but PD is all over it.